7 o'clock, we're gonna start the meeting. I'm gonna hit the button, and then I mail that. Look it up?
Yep.
I'm gonna start looking at the minutes from February 11th, 2019. It's all in the... Does anybody have any changes or additions?
I'll make a motion to accept minutes of February 11th, 2019.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. That wasn't here, so...
Okay. So it's myself, four in favor, one abstained. You good over there?
Yes.
Let me know if I overstep my bounds or understep my bounds. Okay, so that's all set. Mail, I guess. Letter from... The open meeting law violation was closed. This is a letter from above down. I don't know if you want to take a look at it. It's right there if you want it. It's like a complaint about a... car parts store. Pass that around, let's see if you want it. And this is the... This is that plan, I guess, is the complaint? Let's go to the planning board, it's not coming in front of us. Plymouth Street? Let's see. Oh, it's going here. They already approved that? Hmm? Did they already approve? Say it again?
I think a big package under...
Is this from this?
This is part of the 330.
Oh, Lord.
The one with the elastic on it, I believe.
That is correct.
You looking for a ride?
You wanna take a look at that? Hold on in there, feel free. If you guys wanna take a look at this. Okay.
All good.
This is the Mudfest site plan. If anybody wants to take a look at that. Just leave it there for you. This is... What date is that? February 12th? This is an updated plan for February 25th. Maybe I'll stick with that. The... We'll call it a planning council agenda. A wall sign on a commercial building on Plymouth Street. A public hearing for the planning board. Let's see if you want to take a look at it. They're inviting us for the... They're inviting the zoning.
Get them to hear me?
Yeah, so I guess the planning board's having a hearing on March 21st about the auto parts store. And they're looking to request waivers of zoning requirements at some point.
Hopefully by next meeting, we see some demolition permits pulled and that shows a little bit of...
If we extend it to another meeting, I think we have to have an agreement to extend it to another meeting.
I think I agree with you, yes.
The question... Thank you for saying that. The issue is whether or not the board wants to extend it another month.
Here becomes a problem.
Point in the future, so they're inviting us to their meeting on the 21st. So throw that in your calendar. What's the mail? 7:05? Okay, so it's 7:05, we're gonna move into the first... Are you... Recusing yourself?
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah, right. "The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 11th, 2019, at 7:05 PM in meeting room 1 of the Town Hall 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application of Gazia Nasrallah for a special permit to establish a temporary sale stand for the sales of horticultural and/or foracultural products on land Plymouth Street Route 106, 318, Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by R. &amp; J. LLC. John Beck manager has shown on assessor's map 63, lot 6, and 31. Title reference book 38017, page 343. The applicant seeks a new special permit for an agricultural use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section 167.7. Schedule a new summary of uses, page 167.27. The area is zoned commercial. Petition is number 889." You wanna describe what's going on?
My permit was... It last in December 24th, so I have to renew it. Renew the permit.
Okay.
So I'm here for a renewal on the permit. If I can get a renewal... Last time I got a renewal for three years, and if I can get a renewal for five years and stuff, that could be three years to renew it. Things are still the same. Same operation, nothing has changed.
Okay. So the hours of operation are 8 to 7 in the spring, summer, and fall? Looks like the same for the winter, right?
Same from 8 to 8.
8 to 7? Yeah, this is dated 2015. It looked like it was a three-year... Grant. Is anybody here to speak on this? Yep.
I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me where the property is?
Can you just say your name and address?
Phil Nardozzi, property owner at Halifax Meadows.
Yep. So it looks like it is 318 Plymouth Street? So do you want to describe?
It's right across the street from Lionville Cabin and Tedeschi.
So my question is why were... But why was I sent a letter? Seems like I'm not...
So, yeah, anybody who would be in a 300-feet radius of this would get a letter automatically.
I thought it was the property to the left, the Cumberland Farms. Does it feel there?
Yeah, no, no, no. This is already established. To my knowledge, this is already established, we're asking for a permit just to renew. Yep.
That's fine. I really have nothing further to say about it.
Okay.
Okay? Because I thought it was different side of the property.
The permit ran out for three years and I had to renew it.
Not a problem, this is in Israel. I just thought it was the other property.
Yeah, no.
Thank you very much, Jill.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks for coming. Anybody else here to speak on that?
I think both of them.
I'm just kidding.
Isn't that all special permits now?
What do you mean?
Is it a time limit on special permits?
Well, like for an in-law apartment, which is a special permit, right? We do those for five years. I think we've done...
I thought we were working... I thought we could be working changing that, or...
I think they're looking at the bylaw, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's happened yet, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is for five years?
It's been three, he's asking for five.
That's been how long?
I've been there for about 10 years now.
So nothing's changed?
Nothing has changed.
You shut your pretty mouth.
I think they're still the best in the area, aren't they?
Oh, yeah. No doubt.
Any comments from board or anyone else?
No, I think everything looks... Everything's fine. I don't have a problem with going for five years.
Okay. Doesn't look like there's any record of any complaints?
No.
Or any issues with the permit?
Place always looks good. You know?
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend the permit for five years for... Let's get the number together.
889.
For petition 889.
All right, so there's a motion for a five-year extension of special permit applied in petition 889. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Dan. We'll take a voice vote. Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dan? Myself is yes. It passes 4 to 0 to 0. Are you returning to the meeting? We need a form, right? Dan? Jerry? Yeah, okay. Oh, you want me to? Oh, I'll do it. Okay, so... Wait. 7:25. I gotta wait. You got a big... Looks like we have some bills in here as well. There's a little bit of a gap. Our next hearing doesn't start until 7:25, just now.
This is a guy with both. The guy's got greenhouses on them.
So it's in that corner, right there?
No, if you go down Franklin Street?
Yeah.
Past Franklin Street a little bit. It's on the right-hand side, 280 South. And it's 35 acres.
Hmm?
No. And he's got 5 acres, and they have a couple of rounds.
Yeah.
And all he wants to do is incorporate a sound though into his business. You know, if it cut wood, you know, like so, wood normal.
Yeah.
It's already agricultural anyway.
Why would that be a problem? Why would that be a problem?
What's the problem?
Is Charlie coming in here? Charlie coming in here?
Hey.
Is she coming in here?
Paramount Hill. Paramount Hill. It's the same Paramount Hill, but it's in... Yeah, pretty close, yeah. Shame to see that place go.
It's gone.
Yeah.
It's a shame.
Joe bought it one day, it's gone. Remember go buy that place, going in there as a kid.
Yeah. They get both. 4.3 million dollars, right? They get nothing. Everyone along. Minutes to 15 years, made my... Gave it up. I gave it to him, fuck him up. Walk away.
Cut in 30, 36 acres of trees.
It's all agriculture.
Oh, okay.
We could be happy with that, host.
Eric, for that.
Oh, yeah, there's not, there's not.
Did you reach out?
I did, I sent a lot of yours. Yeah.
280 around Lakeview, sure.
My girlfriend.
Yeah. It's a special permit, he's asking. Why do we have to go to sort of what it is? It's a...
He's worried that...
The conditions are...
It's in respect from the first annual.
To operate a business.
That's not easy, is it?
Hmm? I guess this is... I know we've been there. I guess this is what happens. I guess that's something. I guess this is what it is now. That's where it should be. It's just... It's almost like we're using it now. Yeah. It's a right now, you want it now?
It's pretty hard to use it there.
Uh, yeah, I don't either. So at 7:25, we'll start petition number 890. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 11th, 2019, at 7:25 PM in meeting room 1 of the Town Hall 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by George H. Tebow for a special permit and/or variance to refine the existing operations located at 280 South Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Richard A. Merly, as shown on assessor's map 102, lot 50, title reference book 34564, page 71. The applicant seeks a general law chapter 40A, section 6 finding, special permit, variance, and/or other such relief to enable the change, extension, or alteration of the existing uses of approximately 36.5 acres of property to include the acceptance, processing, including operation of wood drying, kiln technologies, sawing, composting, and mulching, storage, and sale of organic, agricultural lumber, forestry, and related products in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under section 167.7, 8, and 21. The area is zoned residential, and it's petition number 890. You wanna run this? Yeah.
All right, Mr. Tebow, what would you like to do on this property?
Actually, thank you, sir. I'm Bill Aronberg. I'm here with just to introduce everyone. I'm Bill Aronberg, I'm George, and this is George Tebow, this is Cassie, his wife. There's folks, Leslie and George are here tonight. And Dick's here tonight, as is Joe's our engineer, who's gonna be doing some stuff. But just give you a very brief thing, and then George targets. Basically, George wants to basically run the same business that's being there now. By way of background, George grew up in Rockland, in New Orleans, lives in Marshfield, Mountainee. Cassie met Cassie out west in Idaho. And George worked for the US Forest Service and fighting wildfires, and also running a forestry business out there. Right now, works for the town of Marshfield Water Department. Also has a tree cutting business and produces lumber. And what he's hoping to do is to make this his full-time job. This is their life dream. Very much wants to be part of the community here. And basically, Dick's approaching with time, and Dick's been kind enough that he's gonna kind of show George the ropes, introduce him to some folks around here. But what I'd say in a nutshell is we're not proposing any changes of any of the greenhouses or any of the building, exactly the same. Joe's in the process of doing a few perk tests, update, in other words, the septic for the bathroom for George and the guys that have the bathroom in it. And also, he's doing some survey and other work for us. Basically, an update in this, George is gonna get... He has a new sawmill, which is new technology that's faster, quieter than the existing one. He's also gonna speed up the process of drying some of the woods by having to kill them also. He's very cognizant that we're in a residential area, this is pretty far off the road. And particularly in the community, you know, tends to reach out, local high school kids, anyone who's interested in forestry to get into this. There's a real need in this area for good quality lumber, which, in other words, he's gonna produce on this, is also a real need for tree cutters, for processing. And it's nice to keep, you know, to keep this activity and commerce in the town, traditional agricultural, horticultural. We're gonna continue to use the greenhouses for vegetables and things along those lines. And basically, in a nutshell, George, what do you want to add to that?
Basically, here on the park, I just would love... I love this community. I want to be a part of it. And I would love to be able to do everything that Bill said.
And one of the reasons we're here is I know under agricultural, horticultural, forestry, just the things we're doing, it's almost, I shouldn't say it's with an abundance of caution, but George and Cassie are all in. All their life savings going into this, and they just wanted to meet everyone in the town and the community, and hope they're gonna be here for a long, long time. And we just want to make sure that, you know, everything's copacetic. We're not proposing anything different than has been the traditional use of the property. And this plan Joe has, this is back, in other words, Joe's in the process of working on which will need when we close, after we... If we get the decision, a favorable decision of the board, after that, we're gonna close with Dick. And in the interim, we're applying to the US Forest Service, and they actually said that George has a forestry plan, help him put one together. Joe's gonna help us to get us a forest to help George with that. But they said that they don't want us to make the application until the deed is actually recorded into George or Cassie. So he plans to do that, and we're in the process of getting that also.
So is there any, any logs going to be cut off of that property?
So I'm going to be planting. And in the meantime of the planting, I would like to bring in some, some logs to supplement until the trees are ready to be harvested.
You're not going to be encroaching on any of the wetlands that are, whatever's upland is what you're going to use?
Correct.
Any, any wetlands, you're not going, it's going to stay the same way what it is right now? And you're going to utilize the greenhouses for?
Vegetables.
For vegetable and flowers?
Correct.
And the bonds that are there, you're going to use them for the sawmill to do?
Correct.
And you're going to?
And kind of keep the equipment out of the, the snow and the weather and all that stuff.
And the, the wood's going to be from other people that are?
Correct.
They're going to bring in wood?
Yes, the, the jobs that I.
The forestry part of it that you're going to do once you own the property is with the F. S. A.?
The N. S. A. Forest Service, correct. Yep, it's a forestry medical plan. I graduated with forest recreation degree. I've been in the forestry field for over a decade and.
You're not going to add any more buildings or you're going to, you're going to add any more buildings on it or just the way it is?
Just going to stay the same.
Any members of the board want to talk to it?
Yeah.
Can you just explain what the map they got up here? I see everything kind of.
Yeah, Joe Webby, Webby Engineering. This is the map we did back in oh-six for Dick when he was buying the property. And at that time, we had the wetlands delineated and his usable areas, obviously, this shaded area. We also went through the conservation commission, got a crossing in this area, and so this is utilized, this is right now currently a field. Basically, up in this area, there's a couple of greenhouses, some outbuildings on this side, a maintenance barn, and then there's a trailer, a construction trailer, basically office. And what they would like to do, the first thing they would like to do is get a septic system in the bathroom and water into the property, so that they have toilet facilities and hand washing facilities. We're going to be updating the plan. You know, I just came on board last week. We'll be doing a perk test on Wednesday. I don't expect anything other than sands up in this area, that's where we're going to be parking. And basically, we're going to be coming forth with an existing conditions plan.
And where is, where are you going to start growing, you know, the trees themselves? Do you have a?
That's, oh, that, oh, yeah, that would be all in the.
Going to do that section here.
Anybody? Anybody else?
I, so I guess I'm not, you've said that you're not changing anything, but you're asking for an alteration of the use. So what exactly is the alteration?
Well, the only, the only operation is we're bringing in a kiln to dry the wood. So we're kind of updating this. We have a new, as opposed to the existing sawmill, we have a newer sawmill that's more efficient and quieter. George, as you can actually pot it within the room. And in addition to that, we're going to have a kiln to help speed up the drying of the wood.
So, so the goal is to cut trees down?
No, the goal is to modernize the operation.
So, I'm, because I don't know what's currently happening there and what is going to be happening.
Sure. What's happening there is Dick, Dick amongst other things, Dick used agriculture, uses the greenhouses, does woodwork, has logs come in, saws logs into lumber. And so, we're doing the same, same stuff, other than we're going to have a kiln, which he doesn't have, and we're going to have, we're going to have a new, a new sawmill.
Is there presently a sawmill there?
There was a sawmill. Yes, yes.
Is the wood that's sawn now just for personal use or just sold to the public?
Just for personal use.
And is that going to continue in case?
No, he's going to sell to the public.
Sold to the public. So how many board feet do you cut now as opposed to what you expect to cut within?
So I'd like to cut the same amount for, I don't know, it'll be tough to, tough to, I guess, I saw on other people's property.
Tell them what time it's sorry.
I saw it on other people's property.
Yes.
So if you have a tree, I take it down for you.
I'm talking about processing.
Yes.
On your lot, how much are you intending to increase it? Or are you intending to increase it?
Don't keep the same.
The same amount of wood?
No, I think you're misunderstanding this. Whatever he takes down and processes logs, but other guys, he's also going to process logs.
How many thousand board feet does he expect to process of which is basically what we're trying to get out of him? What kind of an offer are you going to have?
What kind of, are we talking about an increase or you're keeping the volume the same? That's what I'm asking.
I want to increase it. I don't have an exact number for you.
Right, so now you'll have people coming in and out purchasing lumber where you didn't before? That's what we're trying to get out of there ultimately is now you're going to have, be more like a lumber yard as you weren't before with personal use before, the wood?
Well, all the lumber that I brought in was, was town, trees that went down from the town and I processed them and sold them and made some dairy boxes and stuff like that.
Right, you're using the wood to create your own products?
Yes.
But now you're going to be selling lumber?
Right.
So I think that's the maybe.
So would that be an agricultural use or a business use of that land?
Agricultural use under the, under the zoning exemption, like I have the provisions. What I'm saying is, cutting lumber, selling lumber, processing lumber, transporting it in and out is all under the agricultural use, under the state statutes, under forty-day section.
And we would need to grant that relief to make that happen or you could do that by right?
I think, I think we could do it by right, but the whole purpose here is George is trying to be and Cassie is transparent as possible. So you're right, well, George is, this is how they're going to make their livelihood. And so, with the answer is, George is starting now, he probably has one or two guys working with him on this, and that's part of it, they're cutting the trees, but also coming back here. And again, the business hopefully is going to grow such that he can give up his job at the town of Marshfield, it's going to be a full-time, full-time job.
So, so really, that other than the things you were normally doing before, the new change will be you'll have some more employees there than you had in the past. And you'll have more traffic in and out.
Yes.
With people doing business, buying lumber, coming in and out, which I assume would also mean more trucks delivering unprocessed lumber coming in and out.
Correct, correct.
So that's.
Yep.
And I think the reason we're all asking is that those are all houses right in front of where this is going to be.
I think so.
So that, that would be a, in my opinion, I guess, unless speak for anybody else, pretty significant, if that was my house and it was happening behind me, that would be a pretty significant change. I think that's why I'm asking.
Well.
So you, you might know better than me, yeah?
No, not really. When I, I was farming there, farming pretty heavy. It was corn and so on and so on, we were in and out. And the neighbors right here, you can ask them if there was that much noise or whatever that was going in and out of the. It's nothing at night. In sixty-one day, you could go around the clock, matter of fact, you know, but in the morning, night, we shut things down, so it's not all night long.
Can we ask the building's man?
I don't know if he's here for that, yeah?
Yeah. What do you think?
So correct me if I'm wrong, you're not asking for a section three exemption. You're asking for a section six finding. So you wouldn't be asking for the exemption under agriculture?
Well.
You'll be asking for the legal, what is the legal use you have now? That's what the finding would be.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the legal use is now. I haven't been to the property, I don't know if any of you have been to the property. My intention is it's a legal agricultural use at this point because it's an, it's in an agricultural district.
Right, yeah. But what I'm just saying is the nature of what you're bringing out is, you know, there are going to be one people here, and what I'm saying is the use which Dick has, and then you know, Dick's approach to retirement, slow down, and this is going to be a full-time job for George. So that's really why we're here, is we just want the, we want the board, in other words, I think, under, under agricultural exemption we have here, but, and I think all, I shouldn't say I think, I know all these things we can do, but the real purpose which, which George is saying, he's going to be part of this community. And so, he doesn't, he wants to win and tell everyone that he's going to work his tail off here to make this happen. And, you know, he just wants to make, go ahead, as I said, he can, his wife can use every last nickel he has of a successful business.
To myself, it doesn't sound like agricultural use. You're not harvesting lumber from the land. You're getting the majority of it brought in, so it doesn't fall on the, under agricultural. The definition agricultural under the zoning bylaw is the cultivation of ground for the purpose of producing fruits and vegetables for the use of man and beast, or the act of repairing the soil, sowing, planting seeds, dressing plants, regluing crops, and includes gardening, horticultural, silver culture, and raising or feeding of cattle and other livestock.
Yeah, what, what happens though is when you look at the table of uses, and then you go to one, one sixty-seven, seven D. one, and that incorporates statute in by reference. When you go down to one, it's bottom of the page, and it says.
Yeah, get around.
The definition of agriculture is under Mass. General Law is forty-day zoning enabling Act. And so and so, it defines what that is, and then when you get into. So the zoning enabling act gets into all this stuff, and then it actually, it references chapter one, one twenty-eight, one A, and it has right in here, it says, any forestry lumbering operations performed by a farmer. Farming operations include preparations for market, delivery, and storage to market into a carry as a transportation to market. So, in other words, under the agricultural, that's the exemption and that incorporates that, so all those things are allowed under, under section three.
Are there states growing and harvesting of the forest products upon forest land? He's not, the majority of it's not being harvested from the land.
Yeah, that's correct. But when you have a far, when you have a forestry plan, the nature of forestry plan, the other thing too is, is, I profess, I'm not a forestry guy, the trouble, part of the forester is going to come in, and if there are, if there are, in order to make so your forestry plan is productive, you know, they might require that you take down a couple of trees, any trees you do take down, you do process, but the U. S. D. A., if you're in the process, if you have a forestry plan, pursuing a forestry plan, you're allowed to process any trees of lumber during that, during that time, whether it's on-site or off-site.
That's sixty-one B., which is forest. So are you going to harvest stuff off of the property? That's out of the question.
We're going to, if you want to speak to this, you can.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can wait till you're done.
All right, go for it.
All right, okay. I went to Damon DeRozier on the three sixty-two River Street. It's, I lived there and I've been in these woods a long time, you know, we, we had our run-ins before, I have a couple, a couple of problems, and one of the problems is when they're talking about compost. Now, before he was composting the leftover cranberry product, and it really, it stunk really bad, it was, it was terrible in the neighborhood. So I don't know what kind of composting process they're going to do, but, but as far as, you know, it's, there are a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of nice trees out there, so, I mean, if you say you're not going to harvest any trees, I kind of, I kind of find that.
Well, he ain't going to harvest any trees yet until he gets a plan from.
Right.
The F. S. A. office to say that he has a forestry plan.
That would be.
Other than that, he can't do anything.
Right, that would be, that's really a good idea, because it's, it's a, it's a pretty sensitive piece of property. There's vernal pools there, there's, there's a major stream, there's a substream, there's a lot of wildlife in that area. And matter of fact, one, one year, when the cranberry compost was going on, everything kind of died around here for like two years, you know, because I know there was a lot of leaf shaking stuff in. So that was something would have to be, I would imagine, addressed with, you know, the barriers and stuff, they're talking about bringing in the barriers or whatever. But as far as the sawmill operation goes, my father ran a sawmill for thirty years, and all-time loud, noisy, you know, you're talking about now one of the newer quiet bandsaw mills type things?
Correct.
But what about sawdust? What about that kind of, you know?
What do you mean?
Sawdust retrieval, usually there's noise involved in, in the, you know?
So the sawdust, it comes out too, and it's a little channel that's right along, as far as his kids care.
All right, so it's something, well, it's, it's an environmental thing as well, but like I said, is, that, those are your concerns I had was, was harvesting the land and, and environmental impact basically of what they're going to be doing. You're making a tree farm, that's a wonderful thing, but the composting is, can be an issue in my, my opinion. Smell and, you know, as far as sometimes agricultural, forestry and environment don't go together really well, so, you know, they're supposed to, but.
Yeah, it's part of the forestry management plan.
That's, that's really good.
The plan is a huge part of this.
Anybody in the audience want to speak to this?
Yeah, we've been, we've been standing outside for about twenty-five minutes, and we asked if this was the meeting that concerned us, and.
Come on in.
We were told no.
What's your name, please?
I'm.
You guys can fill in over here if you want, I know the camera's over there, but yeah. Thanks, Bert. Well, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Oh, so we're trying to figure that out right now. Hold on a second, please.
All right, so let's just direct all the, the comments here.
Do you want to talk to you, to this?
Yeah.
What's your name, please?
Peter Stewart.
All right.
What's your address?
What do you have to say?
And your address?
Three thirty-eight. I just had some concerns, and maybe this has all been discussed. I have concerns about the noise, odors from the mulch. There have been a couple of areas that have tried doing this in Middleborough, one's on River Street, just beyond Thompson Street.
Okay, yeah, right.
And from what I understand, they were closed down because of the odors. There's also another place in Middleborough on Wayham Street. I think the name of it is White's, and the people there are also complaining, they're going before the Middleborough, I guess, zoning board, and again, it's because of odors. And they found out that what they were doing is they were adding food products to the mulch, I guess, to expedite the mulch composting or whatever you do with mulch.
It's just going to be.
Mulch is totally different than composting.
Whatever, they, they're adding food products to it, and I'm assuming that we're not going to be adding food products because that is quite a stench.
Yeah, yeah, he's got mulch, but he has compost too.
Compost and mulching, yeah.
He's mixing both of them together. You can't put food products into a, into a mulch pile.
Okay, so you would not be doing that?
You have, you have to direct your comments to the, to the board.
I'm sorry.
Just so we don't have cross conversations.
So you folks will look into it and make sure that we're not adding.
Yes.
Food products to it because of the odor of those boys?
George, are you going to be doing compost and by itself or you're going, or you're mulch by itself? What you're going to, what, what is this? What are you going to do, mulch and compost separate?
Yeah, so for the byproduct of, you know.
The tree bark.
The flitches and all that stuff, it's going to be ground up, that's going to be decomposed. That's it.
So you're not going to add no food product to it?
Like yard waste?
No, like.
No.
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 Okay, I don't know what the food product is that they add in there, but I know some people that live down by White's on Wayham Street, and they said the, the stench is horrendous. You know, which is why they're doing that. So the odors bother me quite a bit. Obviously, I'm very concerned about the wetlands, which includes.
The wetland, the wetlands already been delineated and they're only going to use the upland.
Yeah, but we were standing outside there, so I didn't know anything about that.
No, the, the land has already been, the upland's already been created, and that's what they're going to use. They're not going to interfere with any of the wetlands.
Okay.
And that's the, if you look at the drawing, anything that's within the blue lines, it's upland.
These are uplands. This is, saying this correctly, these are wetlands.
There's, there's a little bit of upland here, but we're not going in there, that's been untouched. It's basically, this is the field that's there now, and this is where their operations are, the buildings, the greenhouses. This is where they're going to be staying.
Sorry. Any other question about the noise too? It's, it's going to be considerably quieter. We can talk like this over the mill. It's not their standard build, a five-foot circular saw, it's very quiet.
You have a mill now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so you're experiencing this stuff, that's.
Yes.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Oh, excellent, excellent.
Why don't you give me a little background, I missed it.
Okay, so I, I went to school for this, I've been in the forestry field for over a decade, uh, out west, down south. Doing a little bit of everything, so, um, right now I have my own tree company, Andrew Tree Removal and Custom Mill. So I have a mobile mill. I'm looking to basically cut dimensional lumber and basically utilize all the, the tree products that are around here. Instead of brining it, I would love to be able to use and give back to the community. I don't want to, you know, I want to be a part of the community. I don't want to, you know, be that guy.
That's, that's good, that's good. What will happen to this land once you cut all the trees down?
I'm not cutting all the trees down.
So this
Going to have logging trucks?
So the
What's that again?
Logging trucks coming lumber?
Yeah, so I have logging trucks.
Is it becoming on South Street?
South Street and then put up, put up a proper.
How about heavy trucks as far as damaging the road?
There's trucks going by there every day now.
I know, they're damaging the road now.
Carrying a load of law.
You know, so, uh, we're worried about the traffic, you know, the big trucks coming down there. We don't have too many little kids down there now, but, uh, that family that moved across from us where Jeff lived, they, they got two young kids. And so, you know, they're going to have to be careful with the young kids, uh, running around there, you know, those big trucks.
And anybody who has a Class A CDL goes through those classes and they are very diligent. They're the, one of the most attentive drivers out there, I have my classmate, and very strict. And you have to look out for everybody, everything, so.
I think a big concern with that street in particular is people outside of the, the trucks are speeding down that road as it is. And that's not an area of town, that's not an area of town where there's any business like that. So there, there aren't a whole lot of truck traffic coming down that street.
The big trucks don't really speed down side roads. I haven't seen anything.
It, it's just not a road that, I guess my concern personally is that there's not a whole lot of room for that. Would, would be my first thought, but that's
I've got a question. The road in there, it's one passage here. Room for one truck at one at a time. Is, is that going to
Into the property?
Yeah. Into your old property.
You're going to have, you're going to have two trucks going in and out.
You can have two.
Yeah. It's got a 50-foot driveway.
I asked where exactly would the sawmill be on this map?
It's going to be beside one of the greenhouses. Greenhouse is now, we're going to say, we're going to
What was that?
Anybody have any more concerns about, about this?
Yes, we'll get along.
What's your name, please?
Don Klein, 280 South Street, directly across the driveway from this location. Dick's been there for how many years, Dick? 12, 14? Somewhere in that area. Dick's been a phenomenal neighbor. Couldn't ask for a nicer neighbor than Dick has been. I have never had an issue with noise. Dick has always checked to make sure I've never had an issue with noise. I go over and see Dick probably at least once every other week, especially though more so lately because I've been out of work. Issue with stench, yeah, back when they would go on cranberries, yeah, it was a little bit bad, but only on windy days. Or, or lack of windy days when there was a slight breeze coming from the west to the east, which is actually very common in this area. But wasn't overbearing. You know, you mentioned that the Middleborough thing, the Middleborough thing, they were doing it all illegally. The state came in and they said, you've got to change all these piles around, they refused to do it, so they got shut down. Dick, I consider is a great judge of character, speaks very, very highly of this job. I trust Dick's judgment, I really do, I'm sorry. I'm all for this, I think it's a wonderful use for the property. I can think of a whole lot of worse things that can go in back there. A whole lot of worse things, like a condo project? It's going to be sold eventually. Dick's not going to be with us forever, we'd like him to stay with us forever. But I can see, I can see the perfect use for this, being a lumber mill, especially with a quiet electric mill. And giving back to the community. The truck traffic when Dick was farming? When you were hanging, there was a lot of traffic. Get a combine going in and out of there at 7:30 in the morning. It was awesome, this thing was huge, it was great. It was a neat tool, biggest one in what, East Coast? Or biggest one in the area, about a hundred miles around or whatever. It's a great toy. That big tractor you had, that thing was fun to drive around in too. I'm all for it, I think it's a wonderful idea and I wish you the best of luck and I hope this all works out for you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you'll be as good of a neighbor as Dick was. And I'll try to be the same neighbor to you on the other side of the street. I also talked to Dick, or to, uh, Walter Kilroy, who is directly in front of it. I spoke to him on Friday, he has no problems whatsoever either, for the same exact reasons that I do. We had a long conversation Friday afternoon, he was going to come up, but he's go, I'd only go if I had an objection. And he is directly in front of it, his property borders it. I mean, this shed is basically in where the, the chipyard is, so, you know, I'm all for it.
Anybody else?
How, how many years will this be operating?
With any luck, until you retire.
That, that's what I was wondering, because
We don't know that.
I, I know originally, I think it was you that bought this land, uh, then you sold it to Dick. You, and, and you had said, this is going to be a cornfield, it'll be a cornfield forever. And then Dick took it, uh, which, you know, and I have no problems with Dick either. He's, he's tried to do a good job there and whatnot. But I'm concerned, once we have this all cleaned out, and I thought we were taking down a lot of trees.
No, not
And I thought, my, my initial thought was, okay, we're going to come in and we're going to flatten this out and then we're going to sell it for something else. No disparaging issues towards you. But, you know, it's going to be a cornfield, nothing else, and as soon as it was cleared, you sold it to Dick. So I was, I'm just concerned, you know, is, is this nothing more than a ploy? So that somebody could clear land in, as I know now, you're not going to be clearing land.
No land is going to be cleared, whatever's cleared is cleared.
Yeah, okay, that made me feel a lot better. And also somebody told me that as far as it turning into a housing development, that can't happen. Is that true?
That, that's probably true, we have to ask the building inspector.
Who's exempted, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't know what's there.
We don't know what's going to happen in the future, though.
Okay, will somebody be coming in and be doing an environmental study as far as avernal pools, uh, vegetation, stuff like that?
It's already been established, they delineated all the wetlands and the uplands out there, whatever's there's there. Nobody's going to touch anything else.
Okay. The, the other thing I hadn't mentioned is this property is under, for taxes, under 61A, health exemption. Staying the same, under the same exemption, so in other words, this is not coming out, it's staying.
But use is not being changed.
Correct, stay exactly the same, so the selectmen, there's no offer to the selectmen or anything, because it's continuing to use for agriculture.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to have one comment and nobody's taking, Mr. Tebow? There's, nobody's taking his character under any circumstance, we're, we're assuming he's a nice guy, okay? I just want to make sure that it's done the correct way.
Right.
You're coming in asking for a section six finding, which is a legal use finding. It's not a section three under 48 farm exemption. So what you're asking for is not what you're saying, it's, it's under. You're saying it's under a farm exemption, that would be a section three, not a, not a section six. I want to make sure the board is clear on that and they know it.
That's why we, we, we'd rather go to land use and get, get a clarification on this. And we'll give you back the answer. We've got to find out for ourselves what's going on before we give you a decision.
Thank you.
No, I didn't, thank you for coming and, uh,
I appreciate it.
We'll make a motion to
I'll make, I'll make a motion to continue petition 890 until, uh, April 8th and, uh, send a request to land use to look into the situation.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll give you a
Thank you very much.
Decision by next month. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue the next public hearing. If you don't mind, if you're all set. Good luck. Yes, nice to meet you.
You deal a lot with children, eh?
You notice that?
Get along, new boy.
When you turn on the AC?
Uh, July.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah.
No problem.
Here we go. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, January's Am I reading the right thing here? Am I reading the right thing? Uh, let's see, Monday, March 11th, start January 14th at 7:05, meeting room one at the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application of Tao Mai and Hip Farm to continue, extend, and alter under 167, 8A, B, and C. Existing apartments, multifamily dwelling, special permit number 14 from 1968. From four dwelling units to six dwelling units located at 395 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property owner, uh, said property is owned by Tao and Mai Farm of 15 Malvernans Street, Dorchester, Mass. As shown on assessors, lot 73, 1B and 73, 15A and 73, 15. Title reference book 48, 346, page 206. They have can seek to continue and extend the use of their original special permit of four dwelling units on lot 73, 1B by combining lots 73, 1B and lot 73, 15, thereby enlarging the 29,300 square foot lot to 43,100 square feet. Area is zoned business, petition number 886. So, where has things changed from last month?
Well, first of all, rejoining you, uh, my name is Paul Seig, he's my, the architect and record representative of the owners here today. I, I was hearing you, uh, you mentioned
Or at least partially, yeah, sorry.
You mentioned the continuance of a four apartment, uh, complex, but it's actually six, that's what's, uh, being requested.
They're asking, there's currently four.
Yeah, oh, I missed it.
There are currently four, so from four to six, they're asking for six, yeah.
So I was involved, uh, started to get involved in this project about a year ago. The limit of our scope of what we did was basically document the existing conditions by taking field measurements and drawing the layouts. And that's, and then, uh, I believe that we were waiting, we were on hold till there was some zoning clarifications. They hired an attorney to represent them. And, uh, once that was going to be clarified, I was going to then come on board to undertake the next stage of the work.
So, so the, in the interim, it sounds like the attorney has not been coming to the meetings. The petition was refiled and we've been waiting for the two lots to merge, uh, in for, uh, a, a bunch of, so, so they currently have merged two lots.
Well, right now, I, I just saw the draw, the, uh, survey for the first time, it looks like there was reconfigured. Uh, the, the property line has moved in order to, for the septic system to be in the same lot. Right, but subsequent, but what that has done then triggered, uh, non-conforming structure that needs, probably needs to be raised, uh, directly above the septic system.
Right here, yeah, we've been talking about that a couple of times, I think, too.
But I think that I want to clarify that that drawing shows two structures to be raised as well. But they would like to keep them, uh, it was miscommunication between them and the surveyor, I believe.
So, one is the pool house, right, or is that this? What are those?
Those are just barns.
So it's, is it the chicken coop or something? So what, what's the difference between these two and this?
I think it has to do with setbacks, they're not, not, not in compliance with setbacks.
So Are we talking about the two up top?
The two squares, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Those, those are supposed to be raised, right?
Yeah, so, here's where it gets a little tricky, so my contention is, because this is, this fallen down, basically. This has been deemed condemned by the fire chief and myself, which means they either bring it up to snuff or they get rid of it. But now that we have these zoning problems here, the suggestion would be to raise the building so that they're in compliance here because they've created a new zoning issue by moving this line back. These structures here, I'm assuming, based on what I've seen, that they've been there for well more than 10 years. They've probably been there for 50 or 60 years, so even though they are, um, within the 50, the structures themselves are probably grandfathered, so those probably wouldn't be an issue if they wanted to keep them up to find safe. So they're not, it's, it isn't water intrusion, uh, they were built under whatever code there was at the time, probably none. So they're, they're okay.
So they were
As soon as they become deficient, though, then it becomes an issue.
So
So they would probably fall under the pre-existing non-conforming, as a pre-existing non-conforming condition, I guess, that's what you could call it.
For the structures.
For the structures.
Not the use.
For not the use, right.
So the lots, have they, have they gone to the planning board and had the lots changed?
I don't know.
This is the new lot.
So this is done?
This is the new lot and the planning board, it was received late, so the planning board didn't make a decision on it as of yet.
Okay.
And again, their contention was, well, we're creating a zoning issue here. But my, my recommendation to them was if, if this estate lot meets the Form A or A and R specifications, then the planning board should approve it, letting the zoning board and the applicants know that they've now a non-conformity in violation and they will be penalized if they don't take it down.
Are these proposed lot lines or did they actually have them registered as changes?
These are, this is what was proposed at the last planning board.
So they're filing?
They haven't filed it yet.
No, they did file it, they voted.
They haven't registered them.
We probably should have
This is proposed.
We probably should have meant that because of the two structures that are above it says to be raised, right? So I, they agree that the one that's near the septic system is to be raised, but not the ones on above.
Right, so this one here you're going to tear down?
Correct, but they would like to keep these.
So when is that going to be raised?
Uh, well, I think, I guess we need to hear from you and, and there's other issues.
She's probably opened that door.
It was supposed to be raised, they said they were going to work on it.
To do what?
To be raised by a certain date.
Oh, I, I was not aware.
Didn't they say that last time that they were going to start raising it or condemn it? Yeah, they said they were going to condemn it, you know, and they were going to work on it and try to do some improvement to show that they're doing something to the, to the property. And nothing has been done to the property. And the more you, you know, the more it lingers, the more it's going to just you need some kind of a meeting. Show us that you're going to do something to the property.
Good thing.
We, we, so we, we're now, this was filed in January, so we're now bumping up against the 90 days for a special permit, right? And the original, and, and we're not obviously beholden to that, but we've been talking about this piece of property with this specific request and asking for specific changes. And the only thing that's happened in a year is the lot line has been filed with the planning board in a year.
Well, what I can say to you is that from this point forward, I will be more involved in this project and I'll make sure that communication is clear and that whatever you decide that needs to be done, then I will, I'll make it clear to the owner that that's the action that needs to be taken.
I mean, can you start on raising that building? I mean, they have, they have to do something.
So I had a discussion, just so the board knows, I did have a discussion with Mr. Guzman before the meeting. And my And my suggestion was, he's gonna have to come up with a couple of reports for me because of the size of the building and the number of units. It's over 35,000 cubic feet. So my suggestion to him was, we need to get at least a chapter 34 report, which is a report that he would file under the existing building code. And if the intention is to go with the six families or the six units, it would trigger a sprinkling, uh, provision. And so that would also require a chapter nine report, which is, uh, fire protection under the building code. So I says, based on you giving me those two reports, I said, that should be done in a reasonable timeframe with the zoning board on, on board, that he could come up with those two reports to see what would be necessary to bring that building into compliance for six units. So if the board was willing to give him 30 days to come up with those reports, at least we would know where we're going. Uh, but you're gonna have to have your timeframes in mind. I don't know where your timeframes stand at this point.
Would it be?
Thirty, thirty days is sufficient for me to prepare such documents, uh, to go to do that research.
So you need 30 days to do that?
If, if pressed, I could do it for less, but I think 30 days would work, but I could definitely do it in less than 30 days, if you needed it earlier.
So, so, and I, I guess the question that we keep asking is, the, the first question is, that would just make it compliant to offer six units? That would address absolutely nothing about whether or not we should support six units as a special permit and our votes. So even to prepare this for a, a, a bylaw meeting vote, that we would not be creating a bylaw-breaking decision, we would, we've been waiting for three meetings now to get that in a year, just to get to the point where by voting yes on this, we would not be breaking the town bylaws. So we want another 30 days just to wonder whether or not we want to add two units that already have had to be evacuated or vacated back a year ago, when there's been no progress on this whatsoever. That's my, that's been my concern, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but from, from my perspective, like, I, that weighs very heavily on my decision on whether or not there should be six units in this building. I don't know if anybody else wants.
Well, like, uh, repeat again, I think that I, I, I'm on board, I am committed to making this on their behalf, making it work. And it, I think there's been an issue of communication, communication problem here. And so I'm here to bridge that gap.
And I would argue in the last few meetings, we've had that problem, but there was an attorney here making the exact same statements a year ago.
And I'm not stating the board goes one way or the other. All's I'm stating is.
Nope, just where we're at.
For my department, I need that report regardless. I'm going to need a report from Mr. Guzman if it stays at four units to make sure it's safe for who's there.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm just stating that that's a requirement from my department.
So he has to give you a report for either, for four or six? If he gives you?
Because it's, at four units, it has to be maintained in a safe and operable situation. I don't think that's been done. And i, if it is, we need to address, if it's not allowed to go to six units, what are we gonna do with those two units and how are they gonna affect the four units that are there? Because it creates a problem for the four units.
The way I understand how, how, correcting where I'm wrong, but basically, the, the building was occupied in, in the transaction, the sales transaction. So, in order, if they don't do any work on it, any renovations or additions or restorations, uh, the, the building department would have to issue a notice of violation for corrective measures, right? So that's the enforcement of, for them, otherwise they don't have to take any action because it was legally occupied as a four, as four units. Now, if they go after six, if they, six, for six units, first of all, it requires your approval for that to be converted to, it's, it's a change of use from, within an existing use group. And so it requires your approval, so I think they want to know whether there's a hope that they, it could be that that's the case, because that will determine how I approach this project, whether it's a six-unit code review or a four-unit code review.
That makes sense. I don't know if anybody.
And we, if we establish what, this, the property is still on with them.
That's, that's another piece of that, yeah.
I mean, this property, from what we understand, is, is not located on the property, it's located on the adjacent property line.
That's within, that's not my, beyond my pay grade.
I understand that, but that's, that's one of the questions we've been asking.
They need to understand.
Yeah, that's an issue we've been asking for, for quite a while.
So what I, what I will do is I will contact the attorney that was working with them and find out what happened and then have him, what are the, what, what do we need to do in order to write that? Because I don't know at this point.
I think that's.
How does the property on the other person's property?
Right.
I think, you know, and I may be speaking out of realm, but they, they would have to do a land swap with the neighbor perhaps, or pursue adverse possession or something along those legal, legal ends. I'm not gonna speak for the attorney.
Right, well, I've never been countered this before, so.
And if the attorney says otherwise and he wants to argue that case, then that's for the attorney to be here to argue the case.
Do you want the reports for four and six? For the sake of, for the building inspector?
I would appreciate that, yes.
What would be the difference that you would need if, if it was four units versus what he would need to produce for six units? Or what they would need to produce for six units?
Again, until I get his report, I think one of the major things is they're gonna have to sprinkle the six units because of the size of the building and they're all connected.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the four units, because it's an existing four unit, it's gonna be treated differently.
And there may be other things that need to be done, but I won't know until I do the code review.
Mm-hmm.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I think you need to see where you are on timeline.
Well, yeah, I'm looking at, so we're two months in.
I think Charlie was saying we're good through April.
I think, well, our meeting in April is the eighth, so it's fairly early. So it's what?
I guess you want the document in time to review it, to have time to review it, right? I mean, you don't want to be presented with the document the day out, obviously.
Well, as long as you get it in time, so the Brooklyn inspector can review it and he knows more than I do.
Well, I would have to review it a little before that. But again, that's not gonna affect you as far as zoning is concerned.
Yeah, there's a difference.
That's, if you have determination. The only reason I bring it up is because it's, it's a big part of the safety. I want my watchie with them.
So they filed, it was December 10th. Is it 90 days from the file date? It is, right?
Hmm.
Well, we voted last month to extend the petition, right? To continue the petition for 30 days in hopes that we saw something happen.
Nothing would happen.
I mean.
Two, three.
I would have taken a, a hammer to that place myself and got, at least had done something. Nothing has been done.
How soon can you do demolition?
Again, just to be, they're gonna have to pull a demolition.
Yeah.
Get a contract.
I mean, so we've seen absolutely nothing happen. So what I'm hearing, again, this is.
There is a. Oh, okay, I get it. Okay, good. So we got it, we can.
Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing again is, they want.
I don't, I don't know.
They kind of, well, what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Is they kind of want assurances, they kind of want, gee, are we gonna be able to get this?
Mm-hmm.
Before they do what they need to do, kind of putting the hot cock before the horse here. I mean, we should be seeing progress.
But they haven't, they haven't showed any progress.
Nothing.
So we keep, we can't keep going.
Can't keep going.
It's up to you guys.
Two, because at some point, I'm going to have to stop issuing violations.
Correct.
And I'm gonna do it sooner.
And we were discussing that a while ago.
Well, I'd be helpful.
Yeah, 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 right.
No, I think we've all tried to, you know, give them as much benefit of the doubt as we can, but now we're at this point.
And the benefit of the doubt largely has been to, to try and get us to a point where we can vote on this and have it actually meet the standard that we have, not necessarily the, the, the question in front of us.
I'm very sympathetic.
What are the big issues with the board at this point? As far as, obviously, the, the house on the other lot, I, I would, that would be a concern. If they are agreeing to raise the structure, that's an issue, but they could certainly go forward and start doing that with a demolition permit, at least get the process going. Um, there were some other issues on the paper that I provided the board, I think they've addressed one by re-changing the shape of the lot.
So what was the architect?
The architect's here, so they've, they've done that.
Licensed contractor under agreement?
For what part of it?
Again, for the six units, if, you, you have to at least get something started. If you're going to do the demo, then you could get a contractor involved at that point. They could pull a demolition permit, they could have a contractor, it could be fine, and you could get that process going.
Okay.
Lot lines, which they, they submitted to the planning board.
I, I think as far as the, the house on the other property, I think that a, a quick email to town council to verify or not verify if it's an issue.
Mm-hmm.
But again, ultimately, it's a decision of the board.
What if we have him do the reports for the, for the building inspector and pull up demolition permits? For the other, to raise that a bill? I agree to that, but from now until next month.
That was in our meeting minutes last month.
Demolition permits are fairly easy, there's a criteria, checklist that they have to do, hazardous material being one of the checklists, things all the way the waste is going, things along those lines. So, again, is it possible if they got a contractor involved, sure.
Use a 30 days to get one or?
Depending on how fast they, they work. I could have, I could have a demolition permit issued easily within 30 days if they met my criteria. Now, if there's issues that they find out there, that's gonna be a different story.
Right, right. I got you.
Right.
I need to take a Volkswagen and ask for some money.
That would be, that would be the shock of my life, too.
They applied for six units, I think his, his report should be six units.
I, I don't disagree. If, if they're asking for six units and you're gonna entertain six units, that was, that's what the report should be.
Right.
So, because I'm gonna address it on the other end. Either, either way, if you deny it, it's gonna be addressed for four units.
So you were wondering whether to fill out a report for four or six units?
Well, this is why, to be very clear, um, if it changes to six, it's a, it's a change of use within the same use group, but if it's not, if it's four, it's not a change of use. And so I have nowhere to go, but other than triggered by the building department that issues a citation, because there's no legal lawful way that they, they require to make any changes to the building.
I think he's prepared to do that.
No, I know, but what I'm saying, but that's why I, I have a fork and I need to know which way I'm preparing the document, whether it's six or four.
I, I don't think that the applicants can base their decision on coming up with a report. If the board requires a report, that's a requirement that the board wants.
That's, that's the other thing.
I don't think you can base it, well, we may not want to do it if you're not gonna entertain it. The burden of proof is on you as an applicant, this is what you're trying to get, this is your application.
Uh, well, yes, I think that, that's right, I think you're right. Uh, and we, I think, I'm pretty sure I can speak for them that they're willing to do that, to prepare a report and then take their chances in terms of what, depending on what you see, that whether it's gonna be approved or not if it's six.
I mean, after 30 days, it's over anyhow.
That's what we said last month.
I know, but I mean, the extension.
I just don't.
The extension is, we can't go any further than that, though, right?
Yeah. Well, they could continue to, we could continue to agree to extend it till the cows come home. We've done that in the past.
Not on my end, from what I have to do.
Okay.
Okay? If, if other things that are out of my control, I, I can't promise.
Yeah, I mean, I, like, my, my personal feeling is I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't know if this, I don't know how I feel about the six units based on what I've seen over the last year and how those.
I understand.
So I guess.
This is a new petition, so.
Correct, correct, and even since December 10th, what I've seen over the last, like, we've been asking for, asking for someone to come to these meetings.
Communication issues.
Someone to get an architect.
Do they understand?
Apparently not, and I think I'm gonna make it very clear, uh, because I don't think it's intentional.
Right, there's a language barrier.
And here's another problem, just so the board knows, if, if you do entertain the six units, now you're gonna have to entertain timeframes, because my guess is it's considerable amount of work and a considerable amount of time and a considerable amount of money. Whether or not they can produce that in a certain, in certain time, I don't know, I can't speak for them. But if they come in and they say, yeah, we're looking to put X amount into it to remodel this, it's gonna take us a year, you as a board have to be willing to grant them, whether it's in phases or whatnot, the ability to have that time to do it.
Realistically, that's probably the way it would happen.
Which, which is a, is a weak argument for six, six units.
Right, well, I'm just being.
You know, I, I, yeah, I get, and I'm just speaking for myself.
That's, you know, if you grant six, six units, now it's for them to perform with me.
Correct, yeah. And, and even if it's four, it's the same way.
Correct.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess the option is, is whether or not we want to extend this or whether or not we want to.
Are you working with them through and through from it started till this ends, or do you just have a certain?
Well, I'm, I'm the arch, it's a construction control project, so, uh, I guess it's over 35,000 cubic feet, so I am, I am the architect of record to the completion of construction.
If he's not involved, they're not doing it.
Can you understand? Do you guys have discussions or you?
I was, like I said earlier, I was involved in the early part of it when I documented, and then I was out of the picture because I was waiting for, for the, for zoning issues to be resolved, at which point I was gonna get back and I hadn't heard anything.
But who, are you communicating directly with them?
Yes, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm now.
So no language barrier or anything between you and them?
No.
Okay.
And did they, did they reach out to you recently or after our last meeting?
Uh, yes. We've been in communication about the meeting, about the time of the meeting, things like that.
Okay. What do you guys think?
So if we don't extend this and we go on it tonight and we go on and on, then they gotta wait two years? Is that what it is?
Yep.
Unless it's overturned by the planning board.
Unless it's overturned by the planning board, which is what I think should happen. It's still only right now.
Take a motion.
They should extend it 30 days. They have shown some good faith, he's here, they've been to the planning board. Last meeting, we're looking for a little bit, and I think they've, they've shown us a little bit.
We're looking for a lot, I think.
It's something.
We, we were looking for, we need it all wrapped up by next meeting and we got.
You could put stipulations on it for 30 days.
Put stipulations on them. Last 30 days.
I know, I know, I know. This is the board's pleasure at this point.
That's right, so now we get, uh, somebody can make a motion. If it fails, we'll, we can have another motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to extend for 30 days, petition number 886. But it's gotta be known that this will be the last extension if we don't get all the, you know, if we don't get.
I will make it very clear.
We need to have, uh, your plan come in, we need to have the paperwork for the six units, and we need to have a definite, um, when construction, demolition is gonna start. Without that, it's not gonna happen again.
Okay. Very good.
So we have a, a motion to extend for 30 days.
I'll second.
And, and a second, and you're requiring demolition permit? And, and a second, and you're requiring demolition permit?
Yes.
What else?
It would check the, the report for, check every.
Check the report for the six units.
Chapter nine report.
On, based on six units and, is that it? How many, online, do you know how many votes we need on this?
Four.
Okay.
We're gonna reissue the, the amended, uh, amended site plan that you have here of record, because it's incorrect.
Right, what's, what's incorrect?
They're gonna have to go back to the planning board.
The two.
Yeah, I mean, they're not talking about it as it is.
Or can, can we either pull it or, or you keep it for record?
We'll keep it as a record, but if you want, if there's an update to it, we'll take it.
You should start looking into whether you can actually do anything on it, see, because of the property line.
Are you gonna need a written extension from the applicant?
We're gonna need a, if, if it passes, yeah, so. Um, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, I'll take the voice vote. Bob?
Yes.
Kazai?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
And I vote no. Uh, so it, uh, does not pass, three to two. Is there another motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we go on a petition.
So petition.
It's my first one. I make a motion that we go on petition eight-eight-six, uh, whether to go from four unit to six unit dwelling.
Three seconds. Sorry. Okay. Uh, we'll have a voice vote. Uh, Bob?
No.
No?
No.
Kazai?
No.
Jerry?
No.
Yeah, no, and I vote no. It's five, uh, zero to five to five. Uh, it is denied.
Okay.
So the six permits is denied, and, uh.
All right, so you will issue a letter to the honor in terms of next, what they need to do?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. This is the name of my firm.
Um, can you copy me on that? Is that okay, or is it legal or not? Is it okay if you send me a copy of the letter?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're good. I think we're good. Uh, thanks.
Yep.
What's the, uh, agenda here? Any agenda on, anything else here?
Is that a session?
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
Let me, um, let me see what his office number is.
Hello, what is this executive session we got?
That's what I was just talking to Rob about.
Okay.
Charlie is downstairs in the finance meeting. He wants to get him when we're ready for the executive session. He just wants to talk to you guys, but like, that's it.
Great. Waiting for mail. I guess we can move into, go into executive session if we want, we can see later. All right, wait.
I think we have plenty of time, huh?
Uh, I mean.
Oh, we have.
I just feel bad.
No progress and.
Nothing.
No matter what you say to them.
And who's gonna take them?
Do you guys have any, you think, through the bills?
We did, mail, bills, everything on the agenda except for whatever the heck.
We haven't gotten paid yet, though.
That's true.
Oh, checks on the mail.
Should we, yeah, we'll wait till Bob comes back. I was gonna do that last week.
I think the answer was, was true, not like if they want to overthrow, they get out back to the planning board.
It's gonna take them two years to get that together anyway. So, so get it together, come to it in two years.
Jerry, this is for, to basically to say that you reviewed the.
I mean, I'm not gonna. Hey, you're a mean one. They already knew I was, they already knew I was the no last month.
Me too, me too, me too, me too. I couldn't have been more clear. I feel like I was being mean, but like, guys, come on.
You tell them, uh, they've been over a year, they haven't even taken a hammer to the purse.
Yeah, and they knew to call.
If they broke a window, would have been good.
Yeah, yeah, seriously.
No, I feel bad.
I do, but it's, I mean, it's.
But we, we have impatience.
More impatience.
I'm probably, like, very trusting, and I was totally sympathetic. I've seen get six apartments, absolute.
Yep.
But you can't, you can't. I mean, they could have, they could have put a match for that building if it had gone up in ten minutes.
There we go. Uh, is the motion a good?
This was almost as long as the die candles.
Seriously, let's open the ends. We don't need Channel Five, come on. All right, we gotta move to executive session, I think, right? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion and go to executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, going into executive session.